Ready to start the agenda session of the meeting? All right, number one, an ordinance to adopt the redevelopment plan for the Ferentz Development Plan area in the city of New Brunswick. Two, excuse me, we need no ordinances on second reading. Two, an ordinance to amend the supplement revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, dot 16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, Reference to College Avenue. Three, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap fee. Four, bond ordinance providing for the general capital improvement program by and in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Littlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated $4,347,250. Therefore, authorizing of debt in the amount of $4,140,000 requiring a down payment of $207,250. Five, bond ordinance providing for various improvements in city water, city water system by, by in the city of New Brunswick and in the county of Littlesex, New Jersey, appropriated $4,344,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $4,344,000 bonds and notes to finance the cost thereof. Six, bond ordinance providing for the various capital improvements for the sewer system in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Littlesex and the state of New Jersey, appropriated $1,500,000. Therefore, and authorizing the issuances of $1,500,000 bonds or notes to finance thereof. And we have no ordinances on first reading. Then we go to the resolutions. Number one, approve agenda minutes. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize city refund for the redeemed tax sales certificate. Four, authorize the lease of copy machine for Division of Fire Safety from, excuse me, Rico USA, Rico USA Incorporated for one Rico model, number C30003SP, digital colored copier system, not to exceed $254,97 cents per month beginning June 1st, 2017, and then May 31st, 2021. Forty-eight month contract, state sales contract, number 40467-G20575, copier, maintenance and supplies. Five, approve authorization and advertise for Bubballo mansion repairs and renovations, specification number 597-17P. Six, approve payment of special, special public defender with Richard Beach, not to exceed $1,650. Seven, approve, seven, approve an on-premise, on-premise raffle, 50/50, at 85 Church Street for Casa of New Jersey Incorporated, doing business as Casa of Littlesex County, date May 7th, 2017. Eight, approve request for use of city property requested by Alpha Fraternity Incorporated for Bubballo Park Pavilion for annual year end event to celebrate friends and family, date Saturday, April 22nd, 2017, ranging from May 1st, 2017, time, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Nine, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Rutgers students for environmental awareness. Location, beginning at Broward Commons on College Avenue to Somerset Street to George Street to Douglas, Douglas Student Center, Nickel Avenue for Earth Day March to raise awareness of environmental issues, date Friday, April 21st, 2017, time, 3:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Ten, approve emergency temporary appropriations. Eleven, request for city property requested by Rutgers University Center for Global Education. Location, Bubballo Park and Pavilion for end of term send off for Rutgers stu-, Rutgers University International Students, date Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, raining day, Wednesday, May 3rd, 2017, time, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Twelve, approve request for street closing requested by Robert Johnson Medical School. Location, Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets for RWJ, Robert Johnson Medical School in complication being held at the State Theater, date May 15th, 2017, time 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM, police extra duty. Thirteen, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 031719, reason to pay additional legal fees in amount of 10, of $18,276.19 to Department Law Firm LLC for Special Counsel, City of New Brunswick to Marvack Construction Corporation, from $266,378.83 to $284,314.2. Fourteen, approve request for use of city property enclosure requested by Veterans Alliance of Raritan Valley Incorporated for Memorial Day Parade with the opening ceremony of Monument Square Park, location Monument Square Park for closures, Livingston Avenue, Welton Street, George Street, Albany Street, Raritan Avenue to Woodbridge Avenue, date Monday, May 29th, 2017, time 10:30 AM to 11:30 AM, police extra duty. Fifteen, approve request for use of city property requested by Alpha Gamma Delta for Bubballo Park and philanthropy event consisting of sporting activities among fraternities and sororities, date Friday, April 28th, 2017, time 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Sixteen, approve request for use of city property and city sidewalk requested by Lincoln Annex, Lincoln Annex School and New Brunswick Board of Education for Lincoln Annex School Field Day, park location, Bubballo Park and Pavilion Fields Mansion Lawn Sidewalk Use. Students and staff will walk to, will walk to and from 165 Somerset Street and Bubballo Park, date Friday, June 2nd, 2017, raining day, Thursday, June 8th, 2017, time 7:30 AM to 2:30 PM. Seventeen, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 011762, reason walk will be organized by New Jersey Walker Environmental Council, new labor requested by New Jersey Work Environmental Council on Labor, location begin at 222 Livingston Avenue, Sanford Street, Joyce Comer Avenue, George Street, Townsend Street, French Street, Patterson Street, Spring Street, Church Street, George Street, and end at 222 Livingston Avenue for March commemorating, commemorating Workers' Memorial Day, date Sunday, April 23rd, 2017, time 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM, police extra duty. Eighteen, approve resolution to support of 1.1 million North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, NJTPA grant for Rutgers Regional Bicycle Share Program. Nineteen, pull that, pull that unnecessary request to city attorney. Twenty, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 031756, request to add police extra duty, approve request for use of city property requested by St. Peter's Healthcare System and New Brunswick Recreation, location Bubballo Park Field Base in East Atlanta for Community Health Care in conjunction with New Brunswick Recreation Day of Fun, date June 10th, 2017, time 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, police extra duty. Twenty-one, authorize tax collect to the transfer of overpayment on several tax utility accounts. Twenty-two, approve request for use of city property requested by Mount Carmel Church of Christ Written in Heaven, location Bubballo Park Pavilion for annual family and friends day, church and church service, speaking, singing, and lunch, date Sunday, May 21st, 2017, raining day, Sunday, May 28th, 2017, time 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Twenty-three, approve request for street closing requested by Glade Delapino, location Remsen Avenue between Nashville Street and Sanford Street for horse drawn carriage from Glade Delapino's home to church for wedding ceremony, date Saturday, June 3rd, 2017, 1:30 PM to 2:00 PM. Twenty-four, approve request for street closing requested by American Hungarian Foundation, location of streets to be closed Bethany Street, end of Hungarian, Hungarian, American Foundation to Somerset Street, Plum Street from 66 Plum Street to Somerset Street, Somerset Street from Bethany Street to Division Street for annual Hungarian Festival, date Saturday, June 23rd, 2017, time 8:00 AM to 7:30 PM, police extra duty.
It's a 23rd.
Oh, 23rd.
It's a 30th.
Okay, thank you, June 30th. Twenty-five, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Emma Quip Crane Rentals, reason place a crane at 36 College Avenue to set the Scarlet Light Monument for Rutgers University, date Saturday, April 22nd, 2017, time 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Twenty-six, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 111629, change order number four, final credit with due length contracting incorporated for Railroad Avenue Pump Station, improvement specification number 846-14R, credit amount $1,432, approval of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the original contract. Twenty-seven, Housing Authority, Housing Authority Board appointment, name Ed Malatero, Resident Commissioner, expires April 3rd, 2021. And we have items for discussion by council and so on and so forth. All right. Anything else? We're good? That's it? First, please.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Fleming?
All right. Please be advised that the notice of requirements, the Open Public Meeting Act has been complied with and satisfied in annual notice which gave sufficient time and place for the conduct of all meetings, of all meetings of municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk and has been placed at the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, named in the whole news. Can you stand for the public?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Would you please have a moment of silence for those that are defending freedom around the world, those that have lost their lives defending freedom, those that continue to defend freedom? Okay, minutes?
Motion, approve minutes.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, we have no public hearings. Correct. And now we'll go to the ordinances on second reading.
President Reed?
Okay. Okay, we have ordinances on second reading, an ordinance to adopt the redevelopment plan for the Ferentz Development Plan area in the city of New Brunswick.
Mr. Council President, members of council, subsequent to the planning board having renewed this and recommended its adoption by the city council, there were some modifications made in respect to traffic flow. I've had an opportunity to look at it, I believe they're substantive in nature, I am recommending to the council that the amended plan go back to the planning board again for its review and approval, and again, it may be submitted to the council with their recommendation, whatever it may be. That being the case, I would ask that the council make a motion to table, and that will in effect fill the ordinance at this time.
Motion, make a table.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, we have number two, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general orders of the City of New Brunswick Title X, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, dot 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, and Section 10, dot 16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, Reference to College Avenue. Does anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. We have number three, an ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap fee. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this one?
Good evening, council, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, just want to, I know I've asked in the past, I still don't understand, what does it mean to do this and why is this done every year by the city?
Council President, because statutorily, if we want to increase the ability to raise our appropriations from a half a percent increase to three and a half percent increase, we're required to come before council put forward an ordinance.
And so the city does this every year, is that a matter of course?
Yes, the city does.
Okay, and is it unusual for a city to do that, or do most big cities do that every year?
It's unusual for big cities. Council President, it's probably customary for most municipalities to, to adopt an ordinance like this. Doesn't mean that you necessarily have to increase the appropriations, but it gives you flexibility to be able to increase appropriations. For the last couple of years, we've had two caps, one was the 2010 levy cap, and this goes back to, I believe, 1977 with the appropriation cap, the spending cap. Tonight, what we're talking about is the appropriation cap.
Thanks for the thorough answer.
Move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. We have number four, a bond ordinance providing for the 2017 general capital improvement program in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Littlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated Therefore, and authorizing the debt in the amount of $4,140,000 requiring a down payment of $207,250. Anybody from the public like to speak on this one?
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, I want to ask about first, some of the items under letter A, public facilities, can you tell me, is this resurfacing tennis courts at various city parks, can you tell me which parks have tennis courts that will be resurfaced?
Alice Jennings Archibald Park is the, we've already resurfaced up at the Memorial Stadium last year, and it looks like we're only proposing to do the resurfacing at Alice Jennings Archibald this year.
Okay, and the other park is?
Buffalo has the number, of course, probably ripe for resurfacing, but I'm not sure we'll get to that this year.
Okay, and I see replacement of flooring and cleaning of the air jocks at the recreation department, where is that, is that the Hub Team Center?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to ask about a couple of other things in V, is, well, first of all, Rutgers Village improvements, is this going to improve the water system and all over there?
No, it's resurfacing the roads after they were dug up significantly to address a storm sort problem, PSENG ran some new gas line in there, and the water utility did do some improvement last year, but this is all resurfacing.
Understood. And then, can I get some insight into the timeframe for the last three items here, I see the road diet for Livingston Avenue, new park on Nelson Street and Welton Street, two different new parks, and the Delaware and Maritime Canal.
All I can tell you is that we're funding money for design work on the, for Livingston Avenue, Nielsen Street, and Welton Street, so I'm gonna, please don't hold me to it, but I think these are things will probably physically start to improve in 2018. This money funds the design work to cause those three improvements, and then the copper dam, I guess I would refer to Rich Moody or Tom Valenti on that one.
Yeah, the police council, I can speak to, specific to the copper dam, there was a number of damage occurred over years to high flooding events, this is specifically right by the Boyd Park area adjacent to the Rutgers Boathouse. The design has been completed, however, the engineer's budget supplied by our consultant engineer was woefully understated based on the bids that we had received this past summer, so we need to secure additional funding to affect those repairs.
Thank you, and so have any firms been engaged for those other three projects, the two parks and the road diet for those designs?
Engaged, yeah. These funds would allow us to let out a design contract, but that hasn't happened yet.
Okay, and they'll all be bidded?
Our, probably, request for proposals. And actually, I think Glenn may correct me, but I think our, the amount of money that we're funding for Livingston Avenue is our contribution towards the project, we're partnering with the county on that.
So I'd like to clarify that, the county is, did not, or selected someone on that, so they've selected T and M Engineering, and this is our contribution towards that contract.
Thank you very much. On your, item C, I just want to know what the upgrades to the server switches and audio visual equipment for the police is, what specific equipment, what is that?
I would look to Mr., I'm sorry, I called in Mr. at the last being Captain Miller, I'm sorry about that. The request is upgrade servers, upgrade Cisco switch, upgrade Cisco switches, upgrade the AV system in the classroom, and upgrade radio channel two, but the specifics I can't speak to. Maybe Captain Miller can.
Captain Miller? Where? Is it key? Upgrade the?
Is that, that's on the agenda? I'm sorry, but where are we at?
We're on the Capitol budget.
Capitol budget number?
I don't have a copy of the Capitol budget. Is it one in all there? I don't think we'll get it. Yeah, all it says is server switches, audio visual equipment.
The audio, I, the classroom was built when the, when the building was built, so I know that that needs some upgrading, and as far as servers and stuff, you know, we have a lot of computer equipment, I can just guess that they need to be upgraded as well.
Okay, and I just want to understand, what is radio channel two?
It's a secondary channel we use in case channel one is our primary channel, if channel one did go down, we have a backup channel.
Okay, so all, all of the radio upgrades are for channel two, not channel one?
Excuse me?
All of the radio upgrades are for channel two, not channel one?
I don't have a copy of that in front of me, so I'd like to say yes or no.
Okay, I'll follow up later, thank you.
I can speak to the requesting upgrade channel two.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none from the ordinance?
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, now we have five, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick and the county of Littlesex, state of New Jersey, appropriated $4,344,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $4,344,000 bonds and notes to finance and the cost thereof. Anybody from the public like to speak on this particular ordinance?
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today, I guess I'll just ask, in order, what's the current status of cell number four?
Please, council, the current status of cell number four, it's due for replacement would, would be the essence of that, so you can anticipate, you know, ten year lifespan out of these, and we're currently in a changeover process, you've noticed these modules, which are rather expensive, but I mean, they, you know, they do produce a lot of high quality water. This, I believe, is the third year that we've been replacing, we do it one at a time, so that's, that's the next status. We have a set of modules on the floor now, ready to go in, and this will be for end of this year, early 2018 for this one.
And is it in service now? The control screens for the membranes, can you tell me what those do?
It's an HMI screen, which is the, it may sound insignificant, but it's actually really important, it's more or less like the CPU and the control screen for that. Again, that's about 10 years old as well, and there's no issues with it at all, but we would like to get the replacement now before it becomes outdated.
Okay, this one, I need some explanation, when you're saying improvements to water quality stations, what exactly does that mean?
That's a tremendous question, I thank you for asking that. That is a, so we can actually have a live picture of the water quality as it goes into the water distribution system, we check it constantly 24 hours a day at the treatment plant, we know what's going out, and we know exactly what's going on, and then we're constantly out in the system taking samples, you know, with people going out to various houses, and we're going to continue to do that, like we got all our color form samples that way, and all our other water parameters, we go out through the distribution system, we do it with people. This would be an actual monitoring systems that we'll have, we're going to start off with two locations, so that the, all the information that goes out of the plant, we know what the water quality is that's going out, we know what it is when it gets to the extremities of the system. So, for instance, what's the chlorine residual, we know what it is going out of the treatment plant, what is it at the far extreme of the system, what's the pH going out of the treatment plant, what is it when it gets out to the extremes of that, so.
Thanks, is this a particular piece of software or product?
It's more of a station, it's more of like a, like a lab station, again, we have several of them at the treatment plant, but, so it's a, it's a monitoring station, and then the really, the high ticket item is actually the telecommunication getting the signal back to the treatment plant.
Gotcha, thank you. Can you tell me what you need the powder activated carbon for, after this cells?
Powder activated carbon is, is a system that we used years ago, and we would like to reintroduce that and get that back in, we believe it's going to be helpful with our tri-hell methane production as well as taste and odor, it's certainly a big help when it comes to that, so.
Can you tell, do you know why it was taken out of the mix?
I don't really, I really can't speak exactly why it was taken out of the mix, it is cumbersome to work with, and the technology's certainly gotten a lot better, there were a lot of safety issues involved with it several years ago, but the composition of the carbon that they're using today is not as, as dusty as it was in the past.
Thanks very much. Improvements to water mains, can you identify specific ones that are going to be improved?
Very good, this, this tails into the Rutgers Village project, where we, essentially, we want to label it as phase one, we did last year on Wilcox, this phase two will be a continuation of Halsted, the finishing up Wilcox, and then we have plans to go from Burnett to the work that we did on Wilcox on Tunis.
And any other mains in the city, or just Rutgers Village?
That's, that's probably what we're looking at at this stage, this, this is the area where we've had the most frequent complaints of water quality issues, and our examination from the pipe that we took out of the ground at the time, the soil conditions that we have over there certainly warrant this, this pipe coming out of the ground at this time.
Thank you, what is a pole barn, and where's, where's that going to be?
That's where at the treatment plant, and it's a, it's a barn with an open side for storage of vehicles.
Okay, I guess fencing at the Farrington Dam is self-explanatory, there's fencing there already, or is this the first?
There's fencing there already, we really need to secure that, we have a lot of add fish in that, pulling it out there.
Okay, you discourage, there shouldn't be fishing.
We do discourage that.
Okay. It says repairs to sewer line membranes, can you tell me what, what that means?
Okay, this is going to get a little more technical, this is a, the waste line that comes out of the membrane filtration room, it's a 24 inch quote-unquote sewer main, it handles the waste and backwash that comes out of the membrane, when we clean the membranes, we acid wash them with citric acid, and we use a high concentration of chlorine. Over the years, we've noticed a deterioration in the sewer line itself, it's actually from the sinkhole that's over there, so we're going to hopefully get a change order involved to slip line it, like we're doing in the rest of the township with sewer lines, and that would be inserting a PVC liner inside the pipe to keep that operational.
Thanks. It says development of corrosion control strategies, I think I know what those are, can you tell me, kind of, why hasn't this done, been done before, is it something that's done every few years, is it something that we're being required to do by the DEP, or is it going above and beyond the requirements?
This is us getting a little bit out over, overhead of the skis on this, but with everything that's going on in Flint, Michigan, and the concern about corrosion control and lead in the water, we want to start at this stage now, exploring the possibility, just the possibility, of adding corrosion control inhibitor to help us with any possibility of lead testing being in there. I can say this about the DEP and EPA in general, they have erased all the rules that we were currently working under, where, you know, if you were in compliance, you had reduced monitoring and you had reduced sampling. They've erased all that since Flint, Michigan, and we've gone right back to 1991, and so now, instead of doing 30 samples every three years, we're going to be required to do 60 samples twice a year, and we're currently, as we mentioned in the last meeting, we're currently in a cycle right now of doing a 60 round sample, as we speak right now, we have bottles that are out in the street, and we're collecting them as we go, just in case, you know, if it ever gets to that point where we have an issue, we want to get out ahead of this and at least have a plan, because it's, it's a long process before you can do any alteration to the chemistry of the water, it's a long process to get it through the DEP, so we want to get out there now and do some bench studies to see what, what corrosion inhibitors would work best for the community.
Thanks for the thorough answer. Can you tell me what, what's, what you're using to recoat the waste tanks and what that means and why that's important?
I can't accurately answer that question, it's an epoxy paint that goes on, it's very similar to, it's exactly the same type of coating system we used in the membrane tanks itself, this is a continuation of the sewer project that we just talked about, because this is, this is a holding tank where the chemicals sit to be neutralized, and so, we've lost, over the 10 year period, we've lost the coating that was on there, so we're going so we're going to go in there and reapply coating on it.
Thank you.
It's not in direct contact with, uh, drinking water per se.
Appreciate that. So acquisition and installation of fire hydrants, how many, and, you know, under specific locations, or?
Um, we're working hand in hand with the, uh, fire department to, uh, come up with any, uh, fire hydrants that are out of service or damaged or, um, old per se, uh, and then that in coordination with the flushing system that we have. We've compiled a list, um, that number there will probably be looking at about eighty fire hydrants to be done.
And, uh, it says valve work in the Van Dyke Gap area, and, uh, why is that important?
We're having issues with some of the valving on Van Dyke in our efforts to, uh, get water over to Franklin Township. If you recall, Franklin Township, uh, put in a, a pumping station, uh, to receive excess water that the, uh, city of New Brunswick produces, and so we're having some valving issues over there. They're very, it's a, it's a big line, it's a twenty inch line, and so it's, it's rather expensive when it comes to valves over there.
Okay, is this any cause for concern about the quality of the water in that area?
No, it's really, it's strictly a hydro issue.
And, uh, the last thing is engineering and design studies for treatment basins, I'm saying the last thing under number eight, uh, water treatment, what does that mean?
That's the big one. That's, that's tremendous. Uh, this would be, uh, we hope to get out, uh, for an RFP for, if you go back to our master plan of the, um, plans that we have to upgrade the treatment plant, in particular the sedimentation bases that we have in there now, uh, have certainly come to the end of their structural life, and it's certainly time for them to be replaced with a newer technology, um, that will use a smaller footprint and yet actually be able to produce more quality water, uh, moving forward. So this is, this is a, uh, a well thought out plan that's been in the works for, for quite some time, and, um, you know, we're looking forward to, uh, getting this happen.
Okay, great, and is there a firm that's engaged, or there'll be a RFP?
It's funding.
RFP, okay. And so, uh, whether it be, how, uh, how many water meters can you buy with six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars?
Two thousand.
Okay, and, uh, has the vendor already been selected? Or?
No, that's, uh, bid it out.
Okay, and, uh, are there specific places where these are needed that you know about, or?
This is just, this is general upkeep of, uh, what we're trying to do.
Okay, thanks very much for your thorough answers.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the ordinance? See any none from the ordinance?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Number six, a bond ordinance, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the sewer system and the city of New Brunswick and the county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey appropriated one million five hundred thousand dollars, therefore has authorized the issuance of one million five hundred thousand dollar bonds and notes to finance thereof. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this?
Charles Cradville again, I'll just be quick, can you tell me, uh, what areas of the sewer system are going to be affected by this? What areas?
Please, Council, uh, currently, uh, we just recently, reaction to closeout of, uh, work projects, which were two thousand fifteen sanitary sewer projects, uh, we have not determined exactly what areas yet, but we are in the next phase, we're trying to triage numerous complaints, and based on the extensive camera work that was done to try to, uh, diagnose where the problems are, so we still haven't selected all the areas yet, but they would most likely be in various parts of the country.
Okay, how does this budget compare with the, uh, like, usual prior year?
Um, for, I think the past several years, we've asked for one and a half million dollars, uh, specific to two thousand fifteen project, there was a compilation of a couple of years, that was in excess of three million dollars for the, the work that was just, uh, is about to be completed, we're enclosed out with an exceptional one minor item, so.
Okay, but one part of the park, of course.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
The ordinance seven zero five, I just asked before this one, who made the motion and who seconded it?
Make the motion, I second.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, now we have nothing on first reading, and we have resolutions, number one of vision fifty-six, rule, uh, seven to eighty-two.
Seven seventy-four.
And seventy-seven four has been pulled. Anybody from the public would like to speak on the resolutions? Uh, come forward, please be your name and address, or remind you that you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Charles Cradville, once again, uh, seven sixty-eight, it's the Marvick case, can I get an update on the case?
What kind of decision made? Decision, I'm told.
I want to just comment briefly on seven seventy-two, uh, it's a great event that's happening this weekend, uh, Sunday at two PM at the temple on Livingston Avenue, uh, it's Worker Memorial Day, and, uh, it's a, you know, a, a moving, uh, event, and followed by a, a, a march that, uh, is usually very well attended and a kind of good experience, so I encourage people to, uh, attend if they can, I'm certainly going to be there, and I know New Brunswick today has a good article about it, and, uh, want to ask about seven seventy-four, um, this is the purchase of the, uh?
Is it pulled?
Oh, why was it pulled?
Oh, because the resolution wasn't necessary with respect to authorizing the park authority to exercise its condemnation authority.
Oh, so it used its condemnation authority?
It did not.
Okay.
The authorization was four, so they must have come to terms.
They did, I believe, I believe they're going to buy it for one point eight million, and my question is just why the New Brunswick parking authority doing that, why wouldn't, uh, the developer do that?
I have no information about that, I'm not involved in that, it was action of, well, the private state park authority owns the Farron Deck property, which is immediately adjacent there too.
Does anybody know if that building was, uh, part of the Farron Park in there? It looks a lot like it, I was just, I was curious if it was privately owned when I heard that?
Privately owned, I don't know.
Does anybody recall, like, how that happened? The?
I don't, I don't know.
Um, and then the last one I want to ask about is the last one, seven eighty-two, uh, appointment of somebody to the housing authority, can somebody speak to this person's qualifications?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Escobar. Uh, I've known her for many years, she's a resident of Livingston, she currently works for the Board of Education, I think she's in major school as a truancy attendance and liaison to families, and I think that she could be a great asset to the board.
Okay, and, uh, does she meet the requirement to be, uh, a resident of, um, you know, subsidized by the authority?
There is two, there's, yes, there's two requirements, that living at a subsidized or receiving subsidized, um, section, so she does meet that.
Okay, terrific, well, I'm, I'm glad to see the seat is filled by somebody who's qualified, and I wish her well, and, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions? See any none?
Who's the resident?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Secora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right, uh, just before we get to the public portion, just want to, uh, listen, it's a nice, we have the Hub City Music Festival going on, uh, between now and April twenty-second, it's in various places, we hope that you can attend, uh, some of you can attend it. Um, we also have had, Cinclavia is going on this Sunday, this Sunday, all day in various parts of the city, uh, it's always been, we've been doing this for a couple, for a few years now, and it's always been a good turnout, we're going to hope that, well, I hope that it's a nice day out also. Um, Cinclavia, then we have the history around New Brunswick, if you look around, we have, that's not the blast, but we have historical landmarks, we own, the city is a historical city, we're just marking off certain places, I know City Hall has a landmark now, we have a sign out front of City Hall, uh, Public Library.
First reform.
First reform, and I know it's the first of many that we're going to have, just to, uh, point out the various, um, aspects of the city, various aspects of the city. Um, also, we had the ten great places, somebody helped me with this one, but I just, I read it yesterday, uh, this is, we were, we were noted in USA Today, I believe, right? USA Today?
Yes, it was the, uh, only festival one at the pre-public library a few weeks ago, it was rated by USA Today, the number ten best in the world, so it was, uh, quite an event, we had a spectacular crowd on New Brunswick.
Thank you, and, John, which one? Oh, um, city of New Brunswick, two thousand seventeen.
Er, er, er. Black is Anderson.
Two thousand seventeen, Urban Cleanup Week has begun this week, uh, so different places have done already, some houses worship, uh, unfortunately, the school kids sweep up day tomorrow because of the weather, the fifth graders have been, uh, rescheduled because of the rain, but there are flowers going on, big cleanup day on Saturday and Sunday, so hopefully everybody can get out and at least do their two feet in the road that you're supposed to do in the first place, and scratch them.
On Friday, at Livingston, Livingston Park near Zurich, I think, on Halloween, they have free flowers for New Brunswick residents, you can come pick out two packs of free flowers for your garden.
And even if you're not one of the first, I think it's the first hundred, you should still get some twenty percent off, I believe.
Um, it's additional, if you want to purchase additional flowers, you get a discount, but I believe they have enough for the first two hundred people, and all of that is on the flyer that's also available, um, by the council chancellor.
Thank you.
A reminder, also this weekend, we have the, uh, going around the Rutgers football game, the inter-squad thing in the morning, of course, they have the women's lacrosse against Northwestern, so they have a big day there, they have a, a concert before, for about ninety minutes, uh, before the football inter-squad game, uh, so that's a, the country group, Bob.
Vegan Rich.
What is it?
Vegan Rich.
Vegan Rich, will perform for ninety minutes, and then they'll have the inter-squad game about, uh, five o'clock at Rutgers Stadium. Uh, the following week is Rutgers Day, some of us know it as Ag Day, uh, that's throughout all the campuses throughout New Jersey, uh, that's going on, and again, just a reminder that the New Brunswick, uh, will be flushing their hydrants, so if you see any discoloration, please let it run, and please be careful if you're doing laundry, if it's coming out brown, you don't want to do that. Um, anything else to sum up? Anything else with the flushing of the hydrants to be watching for?
Again, that, that's the most important thing, is anything to do with laundry, um, if you have any discoloration, my best advice is just don't, um, don't operate the hot water, give it an hour or two to clear up, but, again, we do much for flushing in nights, so it has a decent effect on the, uh, owner residents.
Right.
We have a schedule of the first week of flushing available on the city website, it's on the front of the site right now, it's, I believe the post is what we just called Hydrogen Flushing to begin soon, if you open up that post, you'll see where we're going to flush and what days next week.
All right, uh, anything else? We're going to go down to the public portion of meeting, just a reminder that you have five minutes, please give your name and address, put a record, and we step forward.
Hello, my name is Dan Coglan, I live on Hamilton Street, New Brunswick. Um, I wanted to address the, uh, the city's redevelopment plan, uh, for the cultural center. Um, I understand, I've, I've been reading the, uh, the information on the city's website, I understand that the, uh, the county master plan has a mixed use requirement, I just wanted to know if, uh, if, uh, you knew what it was?
I, I don't know what you're referring to.
The mixed use, uh, affordable versus not affordable, it's in the, it's in the county master plan.
I, I don't know what you're referring to.
Okay, uh, so in, in this, in the redevelopment plan, there's, uh, they're, they're putting in some two hundred or so, uh, units of housing, um, it's being performed with, uh, through the redevelopment, uh, the city council, uh, planning for the past, um, your city and council and, uh, and, sorry, your city, county and, uh, local, uh, master plan have a mixed use requirement, they have a requirement that a percentage of the, the, those houses, uh, those, uh, those apartments be affordable, but the rents were three thousand and twenty-two hundred, twenty-two hundred for a single, uh, you, for a single bedroom, and three thousand for, for, uh, two, uh, two bedroom units. I just encourage the city council, go ahead.
Um, sorry, but you're, you're incorrect about those statements, there's no requirement in the city's master plan, I'm not aware of any requirement in county master plan for affordable housing, however, the project does have a twenty percent affordable set aside, there will be, um, it's about forty units in there that will be affordable.
Uh, just to, just to follow up on that statement, uh, would you say that the, um, the redevelopment plan does not have in it a, uh, a, a thing that says specifically it will be mixed use?
The redevelopment plan has a statement in there that says there will be a goal of ten percent of affordable housing, it is a goal, but it's not a requirement, and this project has exceeded that goal by, uh, by double, uh, just providing twenty percent of the, uh, units as, as affordable. When you're referring to mixed use, mixed use means uses, not, uh, the, uh, the rent levels of a unit. This is a mixed use project, it has, uh, theaters, offices, uh, residential, uh, in the, in the project, there is a mixed use project, and there's no requirement that anyone build a mixed use project on the, uh, the site, that is what is being built though.
Um, so granted, I'm not a planner, uh, so that being said, I, I did, I did review the, the county plan, uh, and the mixed use requirement, um, and I'm, I'm willing to, to bring it forward, um, the?
The gentleman keeps referring to a county plan, I, I have no idea what he's referring to, and there's no obligation to follow what is in the, in a county master plan. These, this project is found to be in conformance with the city's master plan, uh, it's conformance with the, the state redevelopment plan, it develops mixed use house, is a mixed use project with a number of different types of uses in it, as I just described, it has an affordable housing component, so I'm not quite sure what the question is that he, he's asking. It, it seems that we are complying with more than what he is, uh, asking about.
Well, I, so, let's, let's take a step back, I didn't, I didn't say specifically that twenty percent or ten percent, or any, any, uh, level that we talked about so far was sufficient, uh, especially considering that the rents for eighty percent of them are going to be twenty-two hundred versus three thousand, that's it, but already, nobody in New Brunswick, well, the vast majority of people in New Brunswick cannot afford to live there, so you're talking about bringing people into gentrifying New Brunswick, especially since it's going to be on, uh, by George Street in Livingston, you're going to see a, a very large increase in, uh, the amount of, uh, wealthy people who move to New Brunswick, uh, and that will not serve the, the populace of New Brunswick, who is otherwise relatively poor. Uh, besides that, I just want to stress that, and granted, you know, I, I may have misinterpreted this, I'm, you know, I'm not, I'm not here to, to, uh, pull, pull anybody up, but, uh, specifically from the city's website, the development proposed in the plan is consistent with city, county and state master plans, which call for the area to develop as a high density mixed use urban area. Now, I did read the Middle, uh, the Middlesex County Master Plan, I may have misinterpreted, if I did, that's fine, um, but I, you know, I'll bring it, I'll bring it to, uh, to, uh, I guess, the, uh, the city's, uh, attention through a, a different channel, if that's better. Uh, regardless, I would encourage the city to, to raise the level of affordable housing that'll be, that'll be put into, into effect, uh, with the, the redevelopment plan. I think that most people would recognize that twenty percent of the, of these, uh, houses, being, or these, these apartments being, uh, you know, affordable, is not even close to sufficient, and it's not like it's, if, well, you know, I guess it's a question for the city council to determine whether or not, or, uh, the, uh, the people, you know, def, uh, planned, uh, doing the planning, uh, whether or not it's affordable to do the other way, but if, if it's only affordable to put very, very rich people on top of it, and eighty percent very, very rich people, twenty-two hundred for a single bedroom, three thousand for a double bedroom, then why are we doing it? This doesn't, seems like a, a diversion of city, city fines, it doesn't seem like a good idea. I, I'd just like to know what the city council thinks about that.
Um, I think this is a, a, uh, good example of trying to make, uh, the perfect the, um, enemy of, of the good. If you were trying to do what he was, uh, what he seems to be arguing for, and making all the units or the large majority of them to be affordable units, no affordable units will be built because the project won't be feasible. These are very complicated projects to finance, there are a multitude of different financing sources that are going into, uh, this project to make this happen, uh, they're getting, uh, funding through, uh, the state, through the ERG program, which, uh, provides for twenty percent affordable set aside, it is a subsidy that, that allows that to, to happen. Just coming out and saying, let's make everything affordable, that's a nice thing to say, but you have to be able to finance that. And those mechanisms for doing that aren't out there. Well, developers in the city have put a lot of effort into creating a project that is going to provide more affordable housing in the city of New Brunswick. There is no requirement that they provide that affordable housing, but it is something that this administration wants to do and has shown a lot of effort in trying to do projects like this, which have a mix of incomes in them. All affordable housing projects, like we discussed last meeting for the Hoffman Pavilion Project, with supportive needs housing, which are under construction right now for homeless individuals, that is on the Zebra Way Project. This city has shown a tremendous dedication to developing affordable housing. It's difficult to build because you need substantial subsidies because of what it costs to develop. You can't just, you know, click your fingers and have affordable housing appear. A lot of hard work goes into developing these types of units. And this city works very hard in developing those units.
And that is absolutely so. And I'm not saying in any sense that the city is not making an effort. That being said, some of these things that we just talked about are just plain false. There is the low-income housing tax credit we can take advantage of, the community development block grants we can take advantage of, by the way, which have a higher requirement than twenty percent for affordable housing. So, I mean...
Very interesting. Last meeting we were here, and I believe you were here for that meeting, we discussed the Hoffman Housing Project. And we discussed how difficult it is to get low-income housing tax credits. They are an extremely competitive source of funding. Unless you score absolutely perfectly on those applications, you do not get those funds. In this case, with this project, the developer has gone after the ERG money from the state of New Jersey to be able to provide the twenty percent of the units as affordable units. Community development block grants, as you just referred to, have a specific prohibition against using those funds for new housing construction. So you can't use it for that. These things are complicated projects. We've done a lot of hard work to put together a number of different financing sources to be able to develop this. And as I was saying earlier, you can't just make it happen, have them all be affordable. And I think the city has done a good job working with DEFCO and others to develop a very nice project that is going to bring a lot of people into the city to go to the theaters. Those theaters support a lot of other jobs in restaurants and stores downtown. It is providing new housing. There is nothing wrong with having housing that is market-rate housing in town. You need people of all incomes in town to have a successful city. And that is exactly what this project is doing.
So I don't agree, obviously. I think that among other things, that what the gentleman just described is gentrification. So besides that, I think it's worth stressing that while CDVG does have certain requirements on it, CDVG DR has significantly less requirements on it. There's still a lot of money with the state government. I worked with the state government and Department of Community Affairs and I did new construction all the time with multifamily housing. So let's just throw that one out there for a second. Besides that, there's also the, you can take advantage of local partners. Just out of curiosity, I wonder if the people in this room are familiar with the Jersey Community Capital on Church Street, which works with new market tax credits that could be, you know, used by the city. There's a number of different options here. I think that this is not really a good argument against reconsidering this project and raising the affordable housing amount. If there's nothing else, that's it. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Mel Chambers from Board Two. I also wanted to bring you questions and comments about the Cultural Center on Livingston. I am a classical musician in New Brunswick. And so obviously I have a finger on the pulse of the cultural community here in New Brunswick. And I know that a lot of members of my community are very excited about the theater coming into New Brunswick. But I also would like to say that a lot of the members of those communities are not necessarily aware of the gentrification aspects of the introduction of the theater into the community. And there are certainly extremely valuable things that the project is going to bring to New Brunswick. It is going to bring new jobs, more business to the restaurants and to the stores. It's going to bring out-of-town people into the town. It's gonna, it's gonna help to create a reputation for New Brunswick as a cultural center, which can be a very good thing. But it also does not, it brings in rich people to New Brunswick, but doesn't address the issue of economic disparity in New Brunswick. So it doesn't, although it brings in richer people, it doesn't make the poor people more wealthy. So while we are doing these great projects, we do still, of course, need to be addressing those aspects and bringing in new ways to help boost the native community of New Brunswick as well. That being said, I would like to add, I'm sorry.
Can I just respond for a second? People are throwing around the word gentrification here a lot with this project. There is no one being displaced from a single house for this project, no one. It is providing an additional forty units of affordable housing that do not exist in this city right now. In addition to that, market-rate housing is coming into town to help support the town through additional patrons to businesses and so forth. It is expanding the number of days that the theaters will be able to be in operation, which brings in more people to go to the restaurants and stores downtown, which support over a thousand jobs in our downtown. This is not gentrification at all. This is providing, this is growing New Brunswick and it is diverse. We are providing affordable housing. It is supporting a lot of jobs that are both well-paying jobs, like a chef in a restaurant or a cook in a restaurant. This is the type of project that you should do in urban centers. It is mixed-use, it is mixed-income. It's a very good project for this city.
Yeah, and like I said, I acknowledge all those points and I agree with them and I think that they're all wonderful. And like I said, obviously, as a working classical musician here in New Brunswick, it positively impacts me directly and the community are happy about it. But gentrification is a social and a cultural concept and it's not just about literally taking away land from people, but it's about focusing the culture towards the wealthy and taking resources away from people that otherwise might be affected, such as the low-income communities. It's about what, a hundred ninety million, something like that?
What resources are being taken?
I'm talking about a hundred ninety million dollars is being spent on this facility. And while it is bringing in money towards small businesses, that's a hundred ninety million dollars that is not going to low income. So it is one, it's one approach towards building a community. And there are certainly a lot of positive arguments for that approach. I'm just pointing out that there are still communities that are being underserved that are not going to be impacted at all by this new, by this new addition on Livingston. Most of the, most of the native New Brunswick residents will not be positively impacted at all by the addition of the new, this new cultural center.
I disagree because when you bring in, there's sometimes this one stream of thought economically, where people will, they want to concentrate lower-income or impoverished people in one area. And that's been tried before. And what happens is, we've had that before in the fifties where somebody said, okay, let's bring in, let's bring in low-income areas and concentrate them in one park, and that was unsuccessful. When you have a mixed-use community, I came from a place where I was in low-income housing at one point. And our goal was not to stay there for the rest of our lives, where we want to be upwardly mobile. You bring in more jobs, you bring in things, you bring in more jobs, you bring in economic opportunities, then people could be upwardly mobile.
Which is good.
But, can I finish? I know, but when we just say, let's concentrate everybody impoverished in one area, everybody impoverished in one area, you don't, that's not the goal, to stay in one area. It's just like the argument about minimum wage, you know, minimum wage jobs. Minimum wage jobs, sometimes people just want to get started and then get a leg up. You don't want to earn, you don't want to live on that for the rest of their life. You know, so, you know, a lot of people, a lot of times we have all these theories about, okay, let's all put, let's all put affordable housing for low-income people in one area and then, you know, let's concentrate everything, right, let's just concentrate all the money in this area, where we don't want people to be upwardly mobile. And I believe that that distracts people at times.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really consider that, see, I don't really see how that fits into what I'm saying because I'm not arguing against mixed-use. I'm just saying that this is a lot of money that's going into essentially the upper echelon of New Brunswick. It's trying to bring in wealthy people, which helps our, which helps our economy. It does. But I'm just saying that it's money that isn't going somewhere else. And there's a lot of ways to spend money and this is one way to spend money. And it is a positive way of spending money and I'm happy about that. But I'm just saying that's why some people are coming in and aren't so happy about the, some aspects of this project. That being said, I would like to get to my question, which I have not gotten to yet, which is, are there any specific plans towards ways that this project is going to be used for community projects or community accessible cultural events? Essentially, will this be, will this, will this theater be an accessible venue for the local community rather than just traveling in national groups like the ones that use, like the Playhouse?
I think it's, yes. It used to be the home of George Street Playhouse and Crossroads Theater, two theaters that are indigenous to this city. Both have won national awards for the level of plays and theater that they have put on. Both theaters contribute a lot back to the community with their educational programs, with programs for children in schools, after-theater educational programs. Both theaters have a long history, both theater companies have a long history of contributing back to the community. And I expect that they will continue to do that in the future. And we hope this facility is going to allow them to do it in a much bigger way in the future and that so these companies can be more financially stable.
Can you also touch on the seventeen thirty that Rutgers will have in there?
Yeah, Rutgers is putting funding into the project so that they can have programs to here through the Mason Grove School. They will be involved in here. Also looking at, for the affordable housing, targeting that towards the artistic community so that you can bring more artists into town. I think that's a positive thing. But the companies that make up the theater, there are the theaters for physical space and there are the theaters that are the companies that put on the production shows. They have a long track record of being very deeply involved in the community and giving back to the community. And the idea for this is to create better homes for them so that they can be more successful in the future.
Cool. And after this project is completed, is it going to be more expensive or less expensive for members of the community to attend cultural events?
We're not George Street Playhouse, we're not Crossroads Theater. That is their direction as to what they set their prices at. That doesn't relate to the city of New Brunswick. We don't tell them how much to set their prices at. It might be cheaper, I don't know, they're going to be putting on more plays and so forth. It might be cheaper, it might be more expensive, I don't know. But this helps them be competitive. They have to compete with places like NJ PAC and Broadway and other places like that. They're going to have a top-quality theater facility here that will allow them to put on more plays because they're going to have proper rehearsal space so they can have more shows and so forth. They're going to have areas where they can bring in smaller audiences to do things. So I think it will allow them to do more things for the community. But the questions you're asking should really be directed towards George Street Playhouse, Crossroads Theater, American Repertory Ballet, Mason Grove School, all the companies that are going to be involved in the theater. The city of New Brunswick doesn't tell them how to operate.
But the city of New Brunswick is an investor in the project, just like Rutgers is. And so I just would like to know, like, are the people that are living in the low-income housing going to be able to afford to attend these shows and these events?
I'll repeat my answer. That is the question you asked George Street Playhouse and Crossroads Theater. They set the prices for their tickets and they set their community theater programs. So I suggest...
And New Brunswick has no sway in that decision, considering we are putting money, our taxpayer money into this project?
No, we do not set theater prices. That's not what, I don't think any city sets their theater prices.
Right, but we don't have any say in the kind of programs or maybe accessibility programs that can go into a theater?
Shortest possible answer, no.
Isn't, don't they right now have like Family Day or they bring in things like that? They do that on their own before they commute a whole bunch of projects?
Yeah, I think I've tried to say, these organizations are very community-minded. They do a lot for the community. They put on educational performances and bring schoolchildren in from New Brunswick Public Schools, from other school districts and so forth, have reduced-rate performances for them. If you're interested in that, just to just, you know, call David Saint over at the George Street Playhouse, call Crossroads Theater. You can ask him about it. I'm sure they will give you a long history of how they are involved in the community and what they would like to do in the future.
Right, but my concern is if they decide one day that they don't want to do that anymore, New Brunswick has no power to ask them to create these opportunities for members of our community? Like, can we, as taxpayers who are paying for this project, ask for these things?
This is not a...
Do we have that power?
These are not state-run theaters. These are private theaters. They set those things. You can always ask and you can, this is what you do. You want to call them up and ask them to put on certain kinds of shows. Pick up the phone, send them an email and ask them to do those kinds of things and you can hear what their responses are. But these are not state-run theaters.
Okay, so the answer is no. Thank you.
Good evening once again, members of the council. Thanks for, you know, cluing people in on some of the events that are coming up. That was good to hear. I think a big one that nobody should forget is Election Day, which is coming Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. Some people fought really hard for the right to be able to vote for the school board and the school budget. I hope folks will come out and actually support that budget and cast their vote because our vote is our voice. If we don't use it, then we got nobody to blame but ourselves. So I think that's the first, most important thing. Second thing, I want to ask for an update on the proposal for a resolution to call for the impeachment of Chris Christie and Donald Trump.
He called for it and we had a chance to sit down and have a discussion. We feel, I know, one school of thought, how we feel personally as opposed to a political statement, just to make a political statement. So, I mean, that's as far as this has come on so far. We haven't had a chance to banter about it.
So is it a possibility or is it...
I'm saying it's going to, we will have a discussion.
You will have a discussion, okay. Thank you. If there's anything I can do to help, let me know.
I appreciate it. I'll call you.
All right, so this is a poll on here. What do I, Business Administrator Tom Loughlin and Noble Aronel Shabazz have in common?
Superhumble.
We're the only three people to have filed ethics complaints in the past ten years in the city of New Brunswick.
Congratulations.
Stephen Scott.
Either there or mine.
Your name is on that. So I just want to give up a quick plea to folks that you need to comply with the ethics law. You have until April thirtieth to file your forms. And I do want to credit where credit is due. Four people have already filed then, Steven Zarecki, City Clerk Mr. Teresi, Councilman Anderson and Josephine Marqueta. So that's great. And because of that, I can tell you that Mr. Zarecki made a mistake and forgot to disclose a home that he owns and now he's going to be able to fix that in time. So it's good to get a good start on this stuff. And I think that everybody should keep themselves aware of what the requirements are. I've suggested many times that the city can make an extra special effort to do ethics training for all the folks who have to file these forms so that mistakes can be avoided. And ultimately, any person who wants to know about their public official sources of income can find out online at FDS, for Financial Disclosure Statements, dot NJ, dot gov. And you can check those out. And I was surprised the conservator checked some of the members of the planning board and zoning board and find that they hadn't filed yet. I know there's some new members, but I believe the rule is you have to file within thirty days. So I hope that people will start complying. And if you want to learn more about how the Ethics Board works, you can come on Monday night, April twenty-fourth, in this room at five-thirty where there are three ethics complaints, including some very serious allegations that I've made against the Ethics Board's own attorney. And I noticed that he's on the roster this year, so that means he's supposed to file. And I hope that he will file and start complying with the law. But more importantly, I hope that he will resign because he has disgraced his position by not following this law that this body is supposed to enforce. So I hope that Mr. Vignola will find another, another way to make his money and that the board will have an unimpeachable Ethics Board attorney. I have to ask about the housing authority. I've been asking about this loan that they gave to Penrose Properties regarding Hoffman Pavilion. How much was the loan for? One point one nine million or one point nine million? And has it been repaid?
I spoke to John Clark. He explained the loan of one point nine million to Mr. Cradwell. So I'll just let it go with Mr. Clark explaining to Mr. Cradwell.
I'm sorry, he said he explained it to me?
Yes, he said you had the resolution, he explained it to you at one of the meetings.
He didn't say a thing about it. I mean, come on, this is, I'm asking, how much was the loan for? You're telling me it's one point nine? Because the resolution has two amounts.
It's a soft project loan for one point nine million according to John Clark.
Has it been repaid or will it get repaid?
As a soft loan, they don't get repaid.
They don't get repaid, okay. I should not have had to ask so many times. They don't get repaid, okay, I should not have had to ask so many times to get this information. Um, and I need to point out that the Housing Authority, despite violating the overlaw, being caught, being sued, being forced to pay my attorney's fees, which I do not delay in, what's even more sick is their own attorney's fees that they wasted losing the case. Well, they're violating the overlaw again, and, uh, Councilman Escobar, you know about this, I copied you on my email to them, more than half a year to get an application for a parking permit. Why does the property manager's son have a pro, have a parking permit for Schwartz-Robeson if he doesn't live there?
That's something that the House Department reported, so make sure you bring it up again, and I will follow up on that one, you didn't tell me about, I don't recall that one, I don't get other ones, but not that one specifically, about the parking, but I will follow up on that one, Mr. Cradwell.
It's now been six months since I requested that parking permit application. Why does it take the authority six months? More than six months, and they still haven't released it. Something's wrong here, something's very wrong at the Housing Authority, they may be appointing a member so they can finally have a meeting, but I think all the council members and all the members of the public should come out to the next meeting with me, uh, where I'm going to be calling on them to test the drinking water there, because they need to do it, and they've been passing the buck, and I hope you'll join me in that, because it's just wrong to not test the water there. Um, speaking of the water, I need to know, what was the company that, uh, was responsible for the unauthorized opening of a hydrant over the weekend that caused brown water to be distributed in Rutgers Village?
I asked that question today, I lost that one in the answering.
Yeah, if you could rephrase your question again, sorry, I'm being technical.
Yeah, who's responsible?
We don't, we don't.
Don't know?
We don't, we do, we, we, we had an anonymous that, from a, uh, from a resident in the area, that said they saw somebody connected to the truck, they didn't identify who the contractor was.
Okay, what was the location of the hydrant?
No location. Um, it was either Tunis or Longfield, somewhere in that area.
Okay, and, uh, had a brief conversation before the meeting with the water director, um, what should people do if they see that type of thing going on?
I, I appreciate your question, and, and this, this is a great thing, and, and it brings up a really good point. Uh, if you see a fire hydrant and someone's connected to it, and they're not in a fire truck, call the police, don't, don't dial 911 and create, like, an emergency, but if you could give the police a call, and then they can dispatch somebody out there, and then we'll issue a summons. And so, it's a, it's a great effort, whether it be, you know, a complete, uh, city effort to do it, but I, I also encourage citizens to do it as well. So if you, if you see a fire hydrant, and someone's connected to it, and it's not a fire truck, they really shouldn't be connected to it.
Thank you, have a good, have a good.
Oh, excuse me, one second, you let Mr. Penney go? We have a lot of time, I don't know if you can use up your.
I didn't use up.
Yeah.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, thirty seconds? What else you want to give, you want to talk to you?
I just wanted to briefly revisit the redevelopment project, um, just, just to, uh, throw, I, I mean, there was some, some, uh, talk about whether or not the, the rents were market rate, they may very well be market rate, but let's talk about the market rate for a moment, $3,000, $200, if you're working, uh, a minimum wage job, that's more than twice your monthly pay, okay, that's ridiculous. We, we need, this, let's not pretend that this is not to bring rich people to, uh, to New Brunswick, this is to bring rich people to New Brunswick. It's not to bring the people of the community, it's to bring rich people to New Brunswick, to put them into, into the restaurants on George Street to gentrify the neighborhood. Now, I'm not saying that people are being displaced, I'm saying that this will lead to displacement, so that is, that is the, the issue that I think that we, we brought up, um, I'm willing to, to, talk?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Real quick, you mentioned about the historical landmarks, what day is that? You're going to have a day where you're going to have historical landmarks about?
No, they started putting them up, it's very explicit, they started putting them up.
Signs?
Yes.
Signs, signs. Is there any historical landmarks about the city of New Brunswick?
I'm going to work.
You're going to work there?
Yes, I mean, you can, seriously.
Yeah, okay, I figured there's a rumor that the actual, I guess the park across from the Hildridge, that was actually, uh, what a waterfall is.
I'm pretty sure, 100%, I'm serious.
No, sir, they said that, they said that that's where the place where they auctioned off slaves, and, you know, I'd like to know what streets are named after slave on, of course George Street, but, you know, other streets that you might not know of, things of that nature, but, um, that would be great, you know, the historical essence of New Brunswick across there. Listening to, you know, I, that's how I took the reading off, hopefully give me a few more extra minutes, but listening to what you guys were saying about gentrification, and it almost made me throw up, puke in the back, because, you know, this is gentrification, this blatant gentrification, and if you could recall back when the Memorial Park rehomes were built, were predominantly black, they tore those houses down, and the idea was, you know, they displaced all the black people all over, everywhere, except New Brunswick. And now we see in New Brunswick, they're building up homes, they're not inviting, you want to invite the rich people back, but what about the people that, that lived in New Brunswick in the seventies, eighties, and nineties, what plan are you putting to invite them back, to encourage them to come and patronize the city that they were born and raised? What plan is the city putting together for them? You, you patronizing the rich, you're $190 million. You told the people in the projects, well, you know, displace you for a certain period of time, and they will make it so you'll come back, but no one has returned, because the property value is so high, so it is gentrification. You find a reason to push the blacks out, and then when they want to come back in, they can't afford to come back in, because of projects like this. So my, my, my idea, if it's not gentrification, and if you're not exploiting the, the poor people, then what plan do you have to extract up outside poor people to come in? Come into New Brunswick, where you could afford to come here, you could afford to live here at a reasonable salary, at 10, 11, 12, 13 dollars an hour, and not just advertise to the rich people, what plan do you have for the poor people? We see the plans for the rich people. I'm asking the council, what plan is put together with a $190 million budget for the poor people?
Let's have a, let's have a slight discussion, not arguing back and forth, okay?
I never argue.
Okay.
Never.
Because we both grew up in this area, right?
Correct.
Right? Where were, what, what attracts people into a certain area, what do most people work at during that time? A lot of people work, a lot of parents, a lot of parents work at during that time.
Robert Backes.
Huh?
Robert Backes.
No, I'm not talking about the 50s, I'm talking about, like, the 70s, Johnson, remember Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Correct.
Right, Johnson &amp; Johnson?
Correct.
We had, um, place in Edison, the auto plant, Edison, yeah, Ford Auto Plant, Edison, we had Swig, we had Personal Products. People leave, and I'm not saying they, people don't get displaced, people leave, people, people go where their jobs are, and a lot of people left, we were looking at that the other day, we were looking at it, because I attended a funeral the other day, and it was, it was strange, because the, the whole family, entire family, for two generations had worked, you know, for Personal Products at Johnson &amp; Johnson, and a lot of people have moved out, because there's simply, there's not, those same jobs aren't around, those same jobs aren't around anymore. And I'm, I'm like, when they tore down the projects, I had family, I got family that lived there, some people came back, some people wanted to come back, and then some people, they stayed, they stayed right in the communities that they live in right now, they moved away, they moved away, they did not come back, and they had the ability, some people do have the ability to come back. I mean, things take place in different stages, it takes place in different stages. I'm not going to deny there is gentrification in some areas, but, not every, I mean, but everything is not gentrification.
But admit, admit it's gentrification in New Brunswick, admit that.
I would say redevelopment, it's a point, I mean.
Re- redevelopment for whom? Look at the complexion of the city, you know, you know, you know how you tell the complexion of a city? You can look at, you can look at statistics, and you can look at all, well, New Brunswick's predominantly Latino, or, you know, predominantly white, whatever, you know how you tell the complexion of a city? This is simple, let me take a note of this. Go to a public school, if you ever want to move to another place and want to know what type of race occupies that city, go to a public school, wait till the school let out, and see what type of children come out. That's the, that's the reflection of the city. I don't see no rich people coming out of these public schools, but you're gearing, you're gearing your development towards rich people, so they're not, okay, it's good enough for them to come in with their money, and, but, but the, the city's not good enough for my child to go to that school. My child's too good to go to this school, but I can occupy residence, and, and I can, and I can punish the poor in this city, but my child, I would, I would die for my child to go to a public school in New Brunswick. Is that what you're entertaining?
Not at all, my, my kids go to public schools in New Brunswick, I believe in public schools, and there's a, that's another argument for.
But you don't make this personal.
No, no, I'm not making it personal, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, the school, there's a lot of different macroeconomic reasons why complexions of cities change. There's people who don't, there's, there's a difference, there's a difference when you go between homeowners and renters, you know what I'm saying, where people move out of an area, you don't think so?
Brother, there's 2710, you can't run that argument. New York is going through, every city, you, look at Harlem, look at Harlem, look at the房价 in Harlem.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
You can't say that, man.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I do my homework, come on, I do my homework.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I just, let's have a discussion, I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing with you at all.
So, so you're saying it's wrong?
Huh?
It's wrong.
No, I'm saying that we have, that there are different ways to build up a place, where we can't just say, you know, we can't just concentrate certain economic people, certain economic backgrounds in one area, do you think we should keep people who are in the one area?
Within the last ten years, what economic development was geared towards poor people in New Brunswick?
Have we both, a poor school? Just trying to keep my word.
You better just speed that, don't even answer that.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I had an issue, let me deal with the police issue, because that, that just threw me off, that just wasted me, during my time with this, because.
You say afterwards, we can, we're doing.
The reason why I don't like staying afterward, I'm going to explain, I'm going to explain why, I'm going to explain why, because I take what I do real serious, and I feel like if anything could be said to me afterwards, it could be said now.
I'm the same with you, but, I don't want, because we don't, I, I'll let you go with the police issue.
All right, I've mentioned a certain police issue, uh, with the police, I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you a few minutes, I'll stay, I'll stay after for a few minutes, but, um, I've mentioned a certain police issue. Um, just so happened, I, because I'm, I'm one person, right, when I come here and I advocate for the city, block off the streets, things of that nature, I wanted you running to a Walmart, the local Walmart, you'll see me around here, I don't start trolling high and go to a, at a back cave or anything, so you'll see me. So I was at the Progressive Lodge, where, you know, predominantly black, it's probably the only last place black people can go, and, um, since I'm going to give you five minutes, give me a few minutes, so, um, as I was there, you know, the crowd, you know, we all having a great time, you know, um, there was a, you know, a historical, uh, uh, back in the day rap group, they were there, so I seen them perform, it was great, and as I was coming to my car, I noticed something, and it, and this is the last few times I went to the Progressive Lodge, I noticed that a New Brunswick police car sat on the corner, right, while I'm walking to my car, I left a little early, and every car on the corner of the Progressive Lodge had a ticket on it, they gave every car a ticket, and I said, you know, I'm having my car, I was parked correctly, so I didn't get a ticket, so I said, well, all right, something told me that this syndicate, you know, let me drive around the corner and see if the other places where other people go have tickets, so I went to, you know, Richardson Avenue, because Progressive Lodge is Lee Avenue, Richardson Avenue where the Latino bars are, and every corner, there was a car on the corner, but I couldn't find that one ticket on that car, not one single ticket. So what I did was, you know, me to act, I took my camera out, I recorded the cars that didn't have tickets in the same position as the cars by the Progressive Lodge that did have tickets. So then I come to the realization that, and the officers, listen, this is the crazy part, I'm watching the officers circle around the area, they'll go down the avenue, make a left on Comstock, come up, so they're passing the cars on the corner in front of the Latino bars and Red Sox, but they're not ticketing them, they only ticketed the cars that were parked on Lee Avenue for the people that were patronizing the Progressive Lodge. So it, it threw my whole theory off, because from what I thought, New Brunswick was a racist police station, but then I came to the realization that they just hate black people, because it's no longer about money. They had to jackpot all the cars up on Richardson Avenue in front of the Latino bars, they could have ticketed them in this street, and the city could have created revenue, but they elected to allow, look, to break the law and punish the black people that were patronizing a black establishment, one of the only few establishments that we had. Now what sense does that make? You know how Richardson Avenue with predominantly Latino bars, there's only one bar, one place where black people go to enjoy themselves, and this is the place that they target for tickets? I had to record it, I got to record it, how do you explain it? How could your officer, how could he stand up and explain that?
Captain, you know, we have a breakfast. I wasn't there, so I can't explain what happened that evening, I'm glad that Mr. Penney recorded it, because, um, uh, happy to file internal affairs complaint on his behalf, and he can bring down and show us all the videos, I am glad, because usually complaints, I never see his police cars in the area, so I am glad to hear that he saw a lot of bars patrolling around, that makes me happy, but please come down, uh, come down tomorrow, Mr. Penney, who would like to make an internal affairs complaint, and, uh, bring the video down, and, you know, we'll get to your accusation.
Thank you. Anybody, oh, okay, can we, do it in like thirty?
Thirty seconds, this will, this will take 25.
Okay.
Now, you know, I'm one of, uh, State Board of Human Resources, so I understand about, you know, elected officials accepting gifts, so it's not considered, excuse me. I want you to look at that one, please.
The council or the mayor?
It's, anyway, doesn't matter. Intriguing, and I want you to hang that on the wall, that's right, for people to want to see this. Since you were talking about patrolling everyone, he knows what this is. This is the distance, since you want to be a cop, this is the distance where the police car was sitting when an unresponsive female, the unresponsive female was right here. Your, your squad car was right there, she was overdosing in this area, and you, you were parked right here, and you, and you waited for officers to come from the other side of New Brunswick to get to her while you were right here, you were right here. So I'm going to give you information on a cop, I don't think you're an effective officer, I don't think you, I don't think you have the quality to even run internal affairs, furthermore, being a police, I don't think you have the quality to be a security guard. I want you to hang that up, you know why?